For joining us tonight, I'd like to call our meeting to order, the primary school committee for Tuesday September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh five. We've acknowledged our visitors. Again, if you want to speak, there is a form you can write down if there's any topic you want to be a part of. If there's any topic you want to be a part of, we welcome you and we're glad you're a part of our meeting. Any adjustments to the agenda? Yes, so we've had a request which, prior to, I guess, my joining the committee, it was a piece of the agenda we used to do, and we're gonna, we've been asked, and I'm more than welcome to oblige, to include the Pledge of Allegiance back into the beginning of our meeting.
We used to do it before COVID and then it got lost on the virtual meetings, so.
So with that, if everyone would rise, the flag is straight ahead of me and straight behind everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. With that, communications.
That was the only, there were two items that had come into the mailbox. One was about the Pledge of Allegiance and one was the question about school safety, and I got back to that.
Perfect. With that, I just want to remind our viewing audience and those here as well. Any questions can be emailed to scinfo@pembrokek12.org, either now or ahead of the meeting, and we'll respond as we did to this particular topic. Approval of bill schedule is all set, yes?
Yes, it's on the way out.
So with that, I will consider approval for the school committee meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed or abstained? The ayes have it. Thank you. With that, we'll move into the superintendent's seat.
Sure. So at the request of Sue, we had added this agenda item to an upcoming agenda. And so today is the lucky day to review what the library purchasing process looks like for us here in Pembroke Public Schools and just an overview of what some of the digital resources are for our students and families. So I'm just gonna, in your packet, I gave you a whole bunch of narrative on our school committee policies in regards to library resources and materials, review of the materials, the process of reading the library, all kinds of different policies. But I've highlighted some of the most pertinent ones, have included them in some slides so that this document can stand alone on our website for folks that aren't able to join us this evening but have questions on how we go about selecting resources and books for our libraries. I'm going to embarrass one of our audience members, too. We also have our library professional here at North, Ms. Kate Nugent is here in the audience. I'm sure she'll correct anything that I get wrong. Feel free, Kate.
You're welcome, Kate. Thank you.
So just wanted to, just given overview, I'm going to go over some of the current library staffing, what the elementary library focuses are. It's obviously a little bit different here in our elementary school libraries, as you can see looking around, than it is in the library at the high school or the middle school. I'm going to talk to you specifically about the high school process and our school committee policies. And then Mary Beth, my fearless friend, is going to help me navigate the electronic library resources for you. We're hoping that it works, so. So library staffing. We do have one certified librarian in the district. That is Ms. Christine Murphy, and she is located at Pembroke High School. Having a certified librarian is a criteria for NIASC accreditation, so we must have one certified librarian at the high school. The other staff members in our libraries across the district are paraprofessionals, both here at North, Habermock Elementary. The middle school model is a little bit different. As students use the library in the middle school, it's more of their teacher taking them to the library to do research. There isn't, at the elementary school, we call it a special, so they have stream as a special on their schedules, like music, art, and gym. At the middle school, classrooms come to the library. So the support staff in the library at the middle school does not have the same role as that at the elementary school. She's more there for the checking in or checking out of books, but she doesn't necessarily instruct students. So talk a little bit about the space that we spend so much time in here in North Pembroke Elementary School, as well as the other elementary schools. So as you can see from looking around here, it's not necessarily what we remember as an elementary school library. There's many different corners in this room for hands-on learning. Obviously, the traditional books are still here, but our libraries have really morphed into what's lovingly referred to as stream, which is reading plus science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, and that is stream. But as you can see, our libraries do still have the traditional library time that we're used to. I come in here often, and Kate is reading to groups of kids, kids are checking out books. All of that still happens, but this space is also an opportunity for students to have hands-on learning opportunities. So you can come in here and see students working with the Dash robots or building towers out of toothpicks and marshmallows. All kinds of hands-on learning happens here that is an extension of what they're learning in their classrooms as well. So this space has really transformed. This library at North is one of our favorites. Kate does an excellent job here in making it inviting for kids and welcoming. So that is what it looks like at our elementary schools. You have so many policies in your school committee policy manual on our website. I've highlighted a couple of them for you here. So Policy 422 is library resources. It outlines specifically how library books are selected for the district. This is also included in that library manual that I shared with you from 2005 when we went through our first accreditation visit at Pembroke High School. So again, all of the materials in the libraries, most important enrich the curriculum here in Pembroke Public Schools. You know, we're looking for the personal needs, abilities, and interest of the users. We're looking for growth in factual knowledge, library appreciation, aesthetic values, and ethical standards. Information is, information to enable students to make intelligent judgments in their daily life. You know, provision of materials opposing sides of controversial issues so that students may become critical evaluators and users of information. Provisions of materials which realistically represent our diverse society and reflect the contributions made by group and individuals to our American culture. So this policy here has been existing since Pembroke split from Silver Lake. This is a policy that's from 2005. So the way in which we source materials in our libraries has not changed. The medium has changed a little bit, and we'll talk a little bit about books in print versus online resources as we get further through this. But it is a certified librarian that makes the selections, or the school administrator. So let's say Kate would like to purchase a new reading book here for the library at North. She makes that request of the building administration, and it's approved at that level. At the library, at the high school, obviously, our certified librarian makes those decisions. But that, too, has a multi-step process, as I talked about earlier. So just talk a little bit about how we evaluate the materials that are being requested to order. Again, I'm not going, you all can read, I'm not going to read them to you, but obviously developmental appropriateness. Appropriateness is one of the main factors. We talk about the format, the accessibility, the durability. Believe it or not, kids are not super careful with their library books. So you know, hardcover versus softcover, all of those, those things are part of the, part of the process when we talk about whether or not to invest in the resources. Kate and I were talking earlier about where the bulk of the materials are purchased from. And so there was a time where we bought our books from various vendors. Those vendors, books are quite expensive. Obviously, Amazon and the likes are much cheaper for books nowadays, so. So what happens if we have something in our library that we would like to take a further look at and see if it's appropriate, or if a student, staff member, community member has a question about something in our library? You all do have a policy in regards to that, too. So that's Policy 4.23, reconsideration of library resources and materials. It talks about, you know, generally, the challenges of the materials fall into one of those three categories: religion, ideologies, profanity, or obscenity. It, once the book or resources is brought to the attention of the staff member, there is a detailed process in your policy, including a form, a citizen's request for reconsideration of protection materials. It goes through me and comes all the way to you, so that it comes all the way to the school committee if somebody is looking for an item to be removed from our library. So there's not any throwing out of books that happens at an individual school level. Anytime we are getting rid of anything, we know that we bring it to you as surplus. Materials listed by title, published year, all of that, so just wanted to put that out there. In my time here, I have not had any materials go through the reconsideration process. I would say last year is the first time I did get a question about a specific book at Pembroke High School. It did not go all the way through this process, but it was discussed with both Dr. Mark Gallick and the community's content supervisor in our library, librarian Christine Murphy at the high school, as to how the book was chosen and its relevance to what students at the high school were learning, so.
Erin, can I throw for one moment? Do all the elementary schools carry the same books? Like, do we approve one for one? Or so it'd be, it's an individual school decision?
It is. So I, obviously, before, we were a K through, pre-K through 12 district. Pembroke was an elementary district, so a lot of these books in our elementary libraries existed long before many of us worked here. Again, Kate and I were chatting earlier, most of the books at Habermock Elementary School came from the center school. So there's some quite old selections there. It's a function of the staff that's in the libraries. And you know how the libraries came to be. There was a period of time, many years ago, where folks donated books to the library. We don't get a lot of that anymore, but depending upon, you know, what a particular donation may have been, there's, you know, some different titles across the three elementary schools. But there are some staples. You know, some of the graphic novels that you see over here in this corner of the library are pretty standard across all of our buildings. You know, the intent is for the selection to represent student interest. And I think as, you know, library staff shifts across the district, we're starting to get to a place where there's some more harmony between our three elementary school libraries, but it's a work in progress.
No, thank you.
That would sort of, if I can build on your last comment, sort of, and someone who can maybe speak to that, how is that communication piece? Do they meet? Do they say, this year, this is our focus, and maybe this is an area of books we're going to look at, or?
So a lot of the resources in our elementary schools are more focused on the hands-on learning. So we'll, you know, the budget process for the libraries is $6 per student across the district. So there was a time when that was $1 for materials and $5 for books. I can tell you that it has clearly shifted, and Kate and our other library personnel at the elementary schools spend far more on useful materials than on books. I did go through what the purchasing looked like for our elementary school libraries in the past five years, and we've purchased very few books. There's a couple of loose bumps or whatnot that I saw that came through in that novel series, but there's not many books that have been purchased. It's more stuff, hand-on stuff. The Dash robots a couple of years ago were expensive. There's iPads, there's, you know, some different hands-on instructional materials.
Also to your point, Lance, we've been talking for years about trying to get the libraries to be more consistent and for the curriculum across all three buildings to be consistent. We're finally at a place where we have three people in place who are really working together towards that goal. They are going to be using all of their professional development time this year to do that, to create sort of a scaffold of what's going on right now, and then to crosswalk it with the standards, which should be something that I would do with probably Dr. Gallick over the summer, after we get some more detail about what's going on day to day in each of the libraries. But they are work, they've met a number of times over the summer. Kate can attest to that. She's definitely our fearless leader in this work, and they have been able to collaborate throughout the year. And we've set aside all of our professional development time for them to do that because it is a huge endeavor. As you can see, a lot goes on in the library, and it's important that there be some sort of district consistency amongst the buildings.
Yeah, and like you said, that dynamic has changed so much over the recent years. Even when I was student teaching and I was, I was helping out in the library a few times, and like you said, it was more as a parent kind of supporting and helping that way, and just how that's evolved and what that role plays in the overall education of the students.
And developmentally, right, what's appropriate for K and 1 in terms of being immersed in literature and literacy and learning to read and listening to stories. By the time you're in the sixth grade, you're with that experience, should look a little bit different. So there's a lot more student choice at that point, and then there's a lot more hands-on activity.
So there are three main collections at our high school. There's our reference collection. That's not circulated. It stays on the shelves at the high school. It's, you know, your typical encyclopedias, alisters. A lot of that came to us when we split from Silver Lake. There's not a lot of additions made to that part of the collection, though I will just remind everybody that the bulk of research happens online nowadays. But there are hard copy books in the library for that purpose. There's alisters, there's maps, there's encyclopedias and whatnot. The second set of collection, books at the high school, is the nonfiction collection. Again, it's a standard set of factual, factual books, autobiographies. Biographies. You know, again, those are used primarily for research papers. You know, there's not a ton of checking out of the library, because again, also, many of those resources are available online as well. But there are many, both history and English teachers, that take their students to the library at the high school for their class period to work on research projects, and all of those materials are available there for them in hard copy as well. The smallest section at the library is the fiction section, but this is the one that gets the most traffic, I would say. So again, there's several reasons, several ways in which fiction books are selected. Obviously, we're looking for books that are of the highest quality, so they've been thoroughly reviewed. Each book is scrutinized for various elements, as well as reviews from some of those sources listed there, such as Book List, Publishers Weekly, School Library. So these are all accepted organizations through the American library system. Our PHS librarian reads each of the books before it's added to the collection. And in addition, she's always looking for books that have won some sort of literary award, so, you know, like the Prince Award, the Corinna Scott Kin, the Pulitzer, Edgar Allan Poe, et cetera. So, you know, we don't just get a book and throw it on the shelf. There's quite a lengthy process that goes through, that a book goes through before it makes its way to our collections. Obviously, we're looking at grade level appropriateness, reading level, personal preference. You know, we want the kids to be finding books in the library that are of interest to them. Though you can read a lot online, there's still an art to reading a hard, a hard book. I can say my kids don't have that skill, and I'm hoping that they get it soon. But, you know, that is, that is what, these are the books that are onsite at Pembroke Public Schools libraries, our high school in particular. There's a whole nother world of audiobooks and ebooks that we'll talk about as we go through the next section, which is to outline the purchasing process. Again, once a title's been selected, a requisition is entered, and that requisition goes through several levels of approval, depending upon the building. So at the elementary level, it goes through the building principal. At our high school, it goes through our humanities content supervisor, as well as the high school principal, before a book is ordered. So it is no easy feat to get a brand-new book in the library here at Pembroke, so. As Mary Beth gets ready to sit over there, I just want to talk to you a little bit about the electronic resources available for students and families, and remind you about our content filtering. So there are two major acts that protect children on the internet. So COPA, the Children's Online Privacy Protection Goal, that imposes certain requirements on websites and operators of online services directed towards children under 13 years of age. So that is all federally regulated, as well as SIPA, the Children's Internet Protection Act. On top of that, here in Pembroke Public Schools, we use a variety of different content filtering resources. So when you're in our buildings and on our network, or on our devices, and we have GoGuardian in place, so you've heard Brandon Hall, our technology director, talk a lot about GoGuardian. That's something that came into play during remote learning. It allows our teachers to see exactly where kids are on their device, what websites they're visiting, whether they're working in the document they're supposed to be working on, but it also tracks that. So you can see it in the moment, or you can also go back and see who went where and what they were doing on those sites. In addition, our Google Suite for Education has enabled Google Safe Search. So what Google Safe Search does is it filters content for a variety of reasons, including advertisements, dangerous content, pornography, medical, specific medical content, depending on age, sexual explicit content, violence and gore, vulgar language, et cetera. So there's two levels of content filtering that happen, and then there's our overarching firewall when you're within our buildings. Our firewall here in Pembroke is quite secure. There are many times where Facebook, YouTube, none of that comes through. So it is, it is really something that our technology department takes seriously and works very closely with our vendor to make sure that our students and our staff in our buildings are protected when they're on our, our network. When you're outside of Pembroke Public Schools and you're on your Pembroke Public Schools device, GoGuardian and Google Safe Search are still enacted. Just like to remind folks at home, if your student is searching on their iPhone, or on your phone, or on your home computer, we are not filtering that. So I think some people forget that, oh, it's my school Chromebook, or it's my phone. It has to be our device, and then whenever you're using our device, regardless of where you are, those two pieces of filtering software are still on them. You can still see where you've been, you can still get a report of the websites that you've been on and whatnot. If you close it, Mary Beth, I put the link there. The webpage is open. You've got to close the slides first.
She's like, she's like, it looks, it looks great.
So Pembroke High School has, on the Pembroke High School webpage, under departments, the library has their own devoted page. So here, on this page, you have a link to our resources, as well as the Massachusetts library system. So if you go up to the top where Mary Beth just was, the first link is for ebooks and audiobooks through Sora. So if you click on that link. So, if you click on that link, um, you are leaving Pembroke Public Schools. You are no longer on the Pembroke Public Schools library website, you are on the Massachusetts library system. You can see right there, MLS Commonwealth eBook Collection. You can search, download, reserve any book you would like from the Massachusetts library collection. This is only available to high school students. In order to have access to this resource, you must have a certified librarian, which is why the high school is the only building where this is an option for students. With that being said, students have access to books here on Sora that we don't have in print at the library. Um, so it's important that you have conversations with your students about what you think is appropriate for them to be reading. You do not monitor what they're what they're checking out from Sora.
So, that link is only, it's a private link just for students?
So, as you go through this and start to check out the book, it asks you your your um your student um your student email and a couple of other questions. Um, what we did talk about a few weeks ago when we met with the technology department was just a disclaimer that pops up when you click on this, letting you know that you're leaving Pembroke Public Schools. I think it's it's pretty apparent to students that Sora, you can see from the address, it's not a, it's not a Pembroke Public Schools website, but just like when you go on numerous other, you know, websites, there's a disclaimer that says like, if you're over twenty-one, click here, that type of stuff. I do want folks to realize that they are leaving Pembroke Public Schools.
Can you, sorry.
No, no, please.
Can you access it from the school, like if on their Chromebooks?
Yes.
So, they're able to access this site?
They're at, they're able to access the Massachusetts library system on their Chromebooks.
Okay.
But their activity and their behaviors tied to the site is still, I guess overseen by the agreement that's signed at the time of registration, right?
When they, if they were to download a book, that content would be filtered through our content filtering. If you just go on to the Sora site and start searching, you can look at, you know, the samples for all kinds of books.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it is obviously a resource for high school students, but um you can see in the address, it's, I can't read it from here, I think it's Sora, Sora App. It it runs like an app when on your phone. Um, so, while you're here clicking around, we can't tell what you're clicking on. Um, if you download a copy of a book and check it out, then we can see what you what you're looking at. Um, on the site is also our Pembroke High School card catalog. So, um in the middle of the page, these are all of the books that exist in print in Pembroke High School. You can see there's listings there for the other buildings. Students do not have access to those lists in those buildings. It is made for just staff. Only high school students can see what's in the card catalog. So, if you pick an amazing book that Mary Beth's gonna pick, it's probably a book we don't have.
So, parents can't access this?
You can.
Oh, we can access, it's on the website.
Oh, yeah. All of this is on the website.
All right, all right.
Did you pick a book we don't have, Mary Beth?
Do you think we have this book?
How about, we have Ready Player Two, which I know that's a book we have. GW. Yep.
Does that disqualify?
Yeah. So, there's a, there's a book.
I got a second move in that sort of.
Correct. There is a book, you can tell that it's there, you can check it out, you can, you have to physically check it out of our library. Um, we do not have a list, there's no ebook card catalog at Pembroke High School that specifically you're going out to Sora or the Mass library system for that information. But here you can see every book that we have in print at Pembroke High School. So, again, those links on these pages are so that the staff can look at books and circulate books amongst themselves or um look at resources. Students do not have this this choice in any of, on any of the other school websites.
Okay. So, I guess that leads to a question like, so the MLS has a different, probably more diverse selection for students. And so, there may or may not be, let's just.
Right, so it's the same, if you click on the Pembroke Public Library catalog, the bottom one, Mary Beth, not that one, that takes you to the town library, that's the Massachusetts library system through sales, which is just a branch of it. So, this is, every book that's out there is here and students can access it. But when you go to check a book out, it does ask you for identifying information um when you're downloading an ebook. So, it's asking you for your student email, it's asking you for a couple of other identifying pieces of information. Um, but again, it's only a link available to high school students.
It's only available to high school students.
So, um. Could a savvy third grader from Bryantville go into the Pembroke High School webpage, school library, click on school library, click on Pembroke High School?
Or middle school.
And get out? They can, they absolutely can, but it's.
But their behavior is bound by what they sign at registration.
Correct.
Saying they're gonna appropriately and honestly use.
Correct.
The internet and there's consequences if they choose to work outside that.
Correct.
Right?
So, I guess my question is this, because you know, I mean, this is such a far-fetched idea and I feel like everything we have in place is really good, you know, like we have, you know, everybody's very good at filtering the, like the the systems we have in place to filter the content is a, you know, for appropriateness works. Um, I guess the fear in today, today's world is, you know, that you hear about these na- stories on national media, which I don't think is gonna ever happen and I'm hoping will never happen in Pembroke. So, like, you know, believe me, I, but you know, you hear stories like, you know, some well-meaning librarian put in like some gender-affirming book. Um, there's been a few like key ones that have been talked about in, you know, the media recently and in the town of Pembroke, to be honest, because people were fearful that it would end up in our libraries. Um, what I'm trying to understand is, is like if a fourteen-year-old downloads, you know, a, what they thought was a gender-affirming book, but turns out to be a pornographically-written book, I don't know how else to put that, like what, I mean, you know, because they're out there and they seem very, uh, what's the word, like innocuous, I don't know, like they, they, they don't seem like they're dangerous books and they seem like they're helpful resources for someone who's going through some sort of a gender identity transition or whatever and then you open the book and it's something that's like really inappropriate.
Sure, if you, if you download the content um in paper format, it's filtered through our content filter on our devices. So, if there was, you know, pornographic images, it would be filtered some, filtered some of the words or filtered again, it's not um a one-for-one, but there is obviously an appropriateness with some of the books that you're referring to. Um, so they do have, you know, age ranges where they're deemed to be mildly appropriate and I think fourteen is the start of, I think it was fourteen to nineteen, some of the books that we looked at. Um, we don't have them in print in our library, but could they be helpful to a student that's on a journey? Absolutely. Um, so I wouldn't want to say that, you know, we're gonna filter the Massachusetts library card catalog so that kids can't get those books. I think that's, that's really a conversation in your family. Um, and if it's not something that you're having at at the family level that, you know, students have a trusted adult that they can have the conversation with, the intent is obviously not to to be circulating pornography in any way should perform, but every one of the books um that you and I have talked about offline has merit to it in some instance, right? It's not necessarily a print copy that we're looking to purchase at at Pembroke Public Schools. They are available in print in the Pembroke Public Library.
Um, I, you know, I don't know if I agree, maybe I'm just like, you know, I don't know, but like one of those books was really, really inappropriate.
Right, but it's in print in the Pembroke Colk Library.
But that's the Pembroke Public Library, so.
But it's not in print in our school, so you can't get it.
Right, but my point is that like, can they get it, you know, is there a way to make it so that they can't get it, for example, at, like, what if there's a list of books? And I don't know what books, I just know that one that I'm thinking of that I sent to, that I talked to you about already, that I thought was.
On our device, that content would be filtered if you downloaded the book.
The whole, because there was a lot of words in there that didn't seem to me would be that like that filter would get through, but the message would be really inappropriate for any high school student in my opinion.
Right, so there was, there was some illustrations in that book that would definitely not make it through our content filter.
Yeah.
Um, but is that book appropriate for an eighteen-year-old student who, who, you know, is a.
But eighteen and fourteen is a big difference.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and I wonder if there's a way to, like, is there a way to filter it so that the, you know, the family has to go through the school to get the, I don't know.
Right, so we don't have a way to filter the Massachusetts library system. So, allowing students access to that is all or nothing. Um, there isn't a high school in Massachusetts where high school students don't have access to the Massachusetts library system. Um, you know, there are s- books in print that exist in libraries that require parental approval before a student can check it out. That book in particular that you and I talked about does exist in a few Massachusetts libraries that require that you be over seventeen to check the book out with parental signature.
Yeah.
Um, but we don't have these, any of those books in in a print format, so um there isn't a way necessarily to filter what is allowed to students to view in ebooks and audiobooks.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Which is scary, right? I mean.
So, the audiobooks, are those filtered as well for?
No.
So, and so they could just get, download the audiobook and, which is kind of a popular thing to do right now, so.
I think that's how my kids do their summer reading.
Yeah.
It's a little bit disappointing, but.
Yeah. Um, believe me, I, I'm there. Um, yeah, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but that's really unfortunate that we're in a world where, you know, we have to, everything's online and we don't really have any.
Right, I wonder if we could look, I mean, you know, a possible solution would be to block students from downloading ebooks and audiobooks on our devices. I, I don't know if that solves the problem, right? They still have access to the link and they can do it on their own device.
But then it's up to the parents to filter their own devices, you know? So, you know, at least it's not coming from the school.
Right.
And that's really my thought is, like, you know, the parents have to, you know, some, some families are better at it than others, but you know, in my household, I, you know, I look at my daughter's phone to see what kind of content she's like absorbing, you know, like you have to be very careful because there's a lot more out there than obviously when we were kids.
A lot of people.
So, and it's a really scary world, right? So, I think families need to participate, you can only do so mu- the school can't be in the homes of these families, of course, but as a school, we can make a decision of what's appropriate for the school and then leave the rest up to the families. You know, like they can still access it on their home computer, but at least the parents will know and they can still download it, but you know, it's the same as the parents checking their phones or devices for pornography, you know? It's their home device.
Right, so I don't know what volume of ebooks and audiobooks are checked out by our students, I'd have to to get.
Yeah, that would be helpful to know, too.
Kind of an idea of that number, to say even what the impact of that change would be. Um, as I said, when I was going over the policies, you noticed that the policies were numbers and not letters, which means they have not been reviewed in a long period of time. It might make sense to to have four-point-two-two and four-point-two-three um go to policy subs so that they match the um, the number mapping and coding, so I think it's JIC and JICL, which will be library resources and um review of resources. Um, that might be a nice way to start to talk about what if anything. If it's, you know, without having a number, I don't even know what the impact would be for kids or what.
And when we're introducing just the ability to use this tool, is there a dialogue in every library with all the students each year?
So, this, only at the high school, only at the high.
Yeah, this is only at the high school. But, you know, I know we routinely are having conversations about responsibility and accountability on our choices on what we're doing, what we're bringing into the school and.
Oh, absolutely, they just don't have access to the, these websites.
So, they're hearing it and and being.
And what it is, it's good, it's good, it's said, and not even, you know, any area that we go through that with the students, too, and if they live through that, so, they're in a, of course, they're also being forced there.
Because this is, this is a difficult conversation because we're, we're in a situation where I, I wanna think that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we've set an expectation of that appropriate digital citizen. Oh, good lord. I call it, I can't talk, I'm tongue-tied. But, you know, we're, we're having that dialogue, but the, the trick of going into someone's home and enforcing it, this, this gets into a slippery slope, but I think routinely having a dialogue that sets the expectation of, you know, we recognize that there are ways to get around this, there are ways to get around sadly everything. We, we see it all the time on the internet or whatever, but you know, they've all got personal devices now, um, you know, or, or have access to someone else's personal device. So, this is tricky, you know, I, I think we, we could.
What's developmental for your students?
Yeah.
And that there is even for a boy.
If you, if you have too much dialogue.
Right, fourteen and eighteen, big difference, yeah.
But even two fourteen-year-olds, there can be a difference.
There can be big differences if you have too much dialogue, you're, you're whetting the appetite of curiosity on, what am I missing and now I'm gonna go, when that person may never have even contemplated.
Exactly.
Going down that road. So, this is a tricky conversation.
But if it wasn't our, wasn't our role.
Exactly. At, at what point do we hand this off to the parents and families? Um, you know, it's, it's no different than putting somebody behind the wheel. I mean, we tell the kid you're not supposed to speed, tell him you're not supposed to drink behind the wheel, not supposed to do this, but at times they're gonna test the envelope. So, there is a place where I, I wanna shift the responsibility from the school district to the home.
Well, I think our responsibility is a careful collection of material for students that match the developmental level is like the type of data.
So, it's reassuring, we don't have that, these materials, especially what you're talking about, in print or, or be able to even access because of our filters. And I think that's what.
If we're getting into library and research, not just research, but personal preference and what, what are these grappling with and what is it that they want to see in print and, and could that be a help to some students to see, to learn from? So, I think that you get into a very, get into this where I think students really need to partner with us because.
Well, and it's not even with.
But I'm not really comfortable saying.
Well, to say, I think it, it, I'll never forget the dialogue last year, I'm, I'm worried about, you know, some of the, the summer reading choices, I'm like, you know, we, we're talking about violence in schools, but then some of these books have some pretty violent scenes in them. So, but your response and you know, and, and a few people, parents' responses, but remember, these same students are, are accessing video games that are taking things to a whole different level. So, I, I continually go back to, you know, there, there is an accountability in the home environment for oversight. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know how many times over the years I've said to my kids, I love you and I would love to be your best friend, but I'm your mother. And if that means I'm not gonna be your best friend tonight, I'm your mother. And, and that, they, I wasn't their friend that day. So, there, there is a point where we have to set that expectation that there, there's so much we can control, but there is an expectation that there's control in the home, or at least an attempt to it, because you know, I'm not a perfect mother.
But, but also I want to point out too, I mean, you're, you have a very valid point, like you wanna like take away the opportunity for students. At the same time, parents now feel that their rights have been taken away um in a lot of areas. So, in, in one area, for example, would be like gender identity issues. So, parents feel that they don't, and, and legally, they really don't have the rights that they had twenty years ago because laws have been passed. So, um, making parents feel that the library is safe to send, you know, like in not saying like, you have no choice, parent, are, we're gonna give these students access to these resources whether you like it or not, you know, is like, you know, it's, it's, that's the other side of it that needs to be considered. And so, I'm not saying that that's being done here, I'm just saying that that's the fear of parents today.
That's the sad bit, yeah.
Yeah, people are feeling that their rights have been taken away. And, and so, how do we strike a balance so that parents feel empowered and feel that we're not putting their children in harm's way with books like, um, you know, the one that I, uh, that we're talking about that is really over the top and not appropriate for school under any circumstances, as far as I'm concerned? How do we make it safe? And I don't know if the answer is, you know, yes, we'll give high school students access, but they're only allowed to download it with um, uh, administration approval or, you know, or something of that nature? I, I don't know, like it's.
Right, so again, the policies were written in two thousand and five before ebooks and audiobooks were even an actual occurrence in libraries.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just want to circle back to a statement that you made about safe and so that our, our role as a public education facility is to make sure that all students are safe. And so, what, what, how you define safe and how a school may define safe might be two different things.
True.
So, you know, I totally, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but also recognize that there are a group of students out there that don't have the same parental support that many of our kids do have and need a place to go for support and for those kids, school is that for some of them. Um, and we want to make sure that we are able to give them resources for whatever they may be coping and struggling with. Um, and in some cases, that is gender, gender issues and gender fluidity. Um, again, our job is to circulate books in print that meet the criteria that we outlined circulate books in print that meet the criteria that we outlined, and that's exactly what we do in our libraries.
Right, and that's why I'm saying that maybe it needs to be like an administrator-approved content.
Right, but we also have the exceptional use policy K through twelve. So if, if you're downloading something in an eBook or an auto, audiobook manner that isn't appropriate associated with what, what you've signed as a student and a parent here, there's recourse for that. I'm not sure if the answer is to just shut it down for everybody.
I'm not sure either.
Or to chase, or, or is it to chase down the one-offs, right? That's not knowing the volume. I think that's something that we would need to, to look into and come back to.
Right.
But again, what you deem appropriate for your student may be different than what somebody else deems appropriate for theirs. And so we want to make sure that all of that is considered when we're talking about what students have access to or don't have access to in our libraries.
And at this point, like, how often are you replenishing the, the library with print media?
Oh, we get so few books. It's so sad. I think at the high school last year, I think Christine bought maybe twenty-five titles. Nothing.
Yeah.
And they're all fiction for the, it's the smallest section of the library right when you go in. Nothing that's controversial in, in any way, shape or form, mostly, you know, newer times bestseller type stuff and whatnot. There's.
And, and I feel like, you know, in Pembroke, there's very little chance that we're going to have that, the problem that they're talking about nationally. You know, I think the bigger problem will be the online. I mean, because if it was just print media and the kids only had access to the print books, like a simple policy might cover it to say like, oh, well, if some, a parent sees something inappropriate, let's just bring it right before the school committee, rather than going through the whole process. You know, like maybe you can pull the book immediately rather than leave it on the shelf until it's reviewed.
We do pull it. That's part of the.
You pull it immediately? Okay, I thought I misread it then.
And Sue, if I can sort of summarize what I've heard too, it, it seems to be, obviously, we're, we're talking beyond the resources in this particular case, right? And those resources are available on any platform anywhere, right? Instead, our own public library, any res- so.
That's why I'm saying.
So that sort of echoes Sue's conversation of, those conversations really do take place at home.
They absolutely do.
And each family has that dialogue with them because no matter what, it's, it's a resource that we're providing here, and that conversation still needs to start with any resource we give anybody, right? As a parent, if I agree or disagree one way or another, I should be having that conversation with my child.
Absolutely.
And so that needs to continue. And yes, I, I think to your, we've got certain standards and guidelines that we're going to continue to have for both the physical library as well as our digital world.
Yeah.
And, and maybe this is a piece that we revisit from our policy standpoint to, to look to see, does our policy cover everything that it needs to?
Yeah.
Is this a policy that was established by Silver Lake and we just carried it on? Is it something that fits our needs as, as a Pembroke school district? So.
And I did quickly search just to see what was out there through MASCE. I know Mike, when he's here, talks a lot about MASCE and their policy services. I didn't find any library policies that addressed eBooks and audiobooks, but I, I looked quickly, so I'm happy to, to do the, the work and see if I can find a sample out there of anything and bring that to policy sub.
Yeah, that would be an awesome one to. Thank you for listening to me.
So again, I'll post the slides to the website so that they're there. The recording of the meeting, most obviously, on there too for folks if they need it. And, um, I think I heard you say was policy subs should probably take a look at those policies. And do some work there if needed.
Thank you.
Also in your packet. You have a, well, there's not in your packet, but the request for the waiver for PHS girls hockey. So for the past six years since we split from our co-op, we have asked for a waiver from the MIA to allow eighth-grade girls to participate on the high school hockey team. If you're bored and you want to go back through what those conversations have sounded like for the past however many years, you'll know that the level of checking associated with girls hockey and boys hockey is quite different because we did talk originally about the size difference between an eighth grader and a high school senior. We only have one team at the high school. It's a varsity team. You know, we have had great success with, with the waiver in the past and it actually builds a nice feeder for the program at the high school when the girls are able to, you know, join in eighth grade. It also produced our first thirteen letter athlete this past year because they played eighth-grade girls hockey. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the waiver.
Our numbers haven't, because we've developed that eighth grade over the years, we're still not at a point where we don't need the eighth graders.
So we, we hover around eighteen to twenty students. So there was, I think, four seniors that graduated and five eighth graders that played last year. One of those eighth graders went on to a different high school, so that the waiver generally keeps us in the eighteen to twenty grade. I don't think there's a lot of girls that pick up hockey in high school as a sport for the first time. They're usually, they're usually lifers.
Do you mean that's the motion or do we?
Yeah, you need to approve the waiver for PHS girls hockey.
Do I have a motion to approve the MIA waiver for Pembroke High School girls hockey for the eighth graders? We have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
In the opposed or abstained, the ice habits.
In your packet, but I don't, in the electronic packet I sent you, there was some fall sports numbers. I think I have a committed memory, but yeah, here we go. So I just asked Brian for a quick update on where we were with fall sports since we are in our first week of games this week. I know field hockey did have a game. But you can see our five-year average is there. You know, I think what we've talked about in the past with sports in particular is looking at it as a percentage of enrollment. And you can see that we are, are pretty steady. You know, everything dipped a little bit during COVID because we didn't have you know, as many opportunities for students. Sports looked a little bit different. Football wasn't in the fall that year. But about forty, forty-two percent of our current high school students are playing a fall sport, so that's three hundred and ten students. There were two sports that they did have to make cuts. So golf made reductions this year and volleyball, which is great because volleyball has kind of ebbed and flowed a little bit. So it's great that we have students coming out of the middle school interested in trying volleyball. So that's a testament to the feeder program that they have there as well.
Do you know what hockey was?
I know what field hockey was.
I had a Twitter sub date. I was trying to get it.
He's very good balance. Thank you, Mark.
Also in your packet, you have the eighty-seven page of the evaluation rubric.
Yeah, it's been fun to read over.
And the goals. So we started this conversation back in May, just taking a look at kind of what the goals of the school committee are and finding some places in the rubric that you think the goal is aligned to, so I'm going to hand it off to somebody else.
Yes, no, that's on to me. So with feedback from the committee, I think the two standards we're focusing on are standard two and standard three, which is the management and operations and family and community engagement. That seemed to be one that the committee felt most appropriate. So we're focusing on that. So I'm taking our committee's notes and summarizing in those two areas and we will have your evaluation.
Sure. Perfect. Well, that was easy. The last thing in your packet was an attempt to put together a regular meeting-like schedule for the subcommittees. So I think during COVID, we lost track of the value of having some of these subcommittees because we were really just treading water, I think, day in and day out. You know, there wasn't a lot of visionary work that necessarily happened over the course of, of the pandemic, but you know, a lot of those things are happening and we have a lot of ideas that we want to move forward to. On the subcommittees can expect to meet, you know, six, seven, eight times over the course of the year on specific topics. I think it's helpful. If for some reason we get to January and we don't need to meet about something, then I'm happy to cancel it. But I do think if we can come up with a way to, to have a standing meeting for, I think these three subcommittees in particular, education, long-range planning and policy, fiscal strategy does its own thing, right? It starts to ramp up really, really quickly in December and it meets all of the time. Some of these other topics will lend themselves to fiscal strategy, so it'll be a follow-up meeting. And then negotiation subcommittee only meets when we're negotiating and we're not negotiating this year. So I do think these three subcommittees, a lot of great work happens in those committees when they meet and they meet often and have great conversation. And I'd like to get back to that. I just started with some of the topics that I think we're looking to make some movement on over the course of, of this school year going into next year. But I'm happy to, to take anyone's feedback on things that they didn't necessarily see here. Again, I'm happy to add the library sub to the policy group too. There was a period of time, five and six years ago, where Ginny Wondell and Sue Scroggins and I went through every numbered policy and mapped them to a letter policy. That work wasn't completed. You know, they just physically ran out of time, so there is some of that housekeeping work that needs to happen too. So, I mean, in effect, policy sub could probably meet every month. There's always something to talk about. And you'll notice here, when we have discussions, we're often kicking it back down because it's something that hasn't been looked at at the subcommittee level in, in a while. But if, if you all are open to this idea, I'm happy to source with the members, like, is it the first Wednesday of every month that works best? And kind of get that together and work on, on the topics with the, with the group. And if you have things you want me to add or things that you would like me to take off.
How quickly do you need to start?
I don't have them starting until October because I just figured, you know, we need a little bit of time to, you know, let the dust settle a little bit for the, the school year. And, you know, I like for other staff members to come to the subcommittee meetings and present as well. It's important for you all to hear from teachers and administrators and other support staff. So I want to just give them a chance to get back into their routine and, you know, so the idea of coming to a meeting after school isn't daunting.
And I would think it would be helpful for us as a committee to go back and look at our goals and see how those goals and what we hope to achieve would work into these various subcommittees too. And then if you need to tweak this, tweak it. I, I, I like the idea of it because then we're doing constant work. And I think we all learn more about the different areas that aren't our areas of expertise and, and we also keep that achievement of the goals. And, and we are to admit that your goals in, you know, moving forward as we move the district forward.
Well, and Sue, to that end, I think, so my nonprofit world, I'm used to subcommittees always having a member of the board and they come back and they're the representative rather than the staff, right? So this is a chance for us as a school committee to really represent that and give Aaron and these guys a break to, to share back. It should be our responsibility as a community member to what happened in our, in our working group, bring that back to the, and then take, after a meeting, we should have whether it's a summary or an update or something. That way we're feeling more engaged, sharing our community work with everyone that way too.
Yep, I agree.
Some of the topics are boring, I'm not going to lie, but.
What needs to happen to them.
I tried to take a look at what the focus groups were too, that we were offering in timeline-wise so that we'd have an opportunity to hear from some parents. We could bring that feedback to the subcommittee, you know, and, and kind of work it through, you know, full circle so that everybody has a, a piece to the process. So this is a work in progress. If you guys are theoretically in favor of it, I'm happy to start to figure out what the dates, the consistent date is, and we can work together on what the topics are back and forth.
It's a great idea.
Give us a little bit of time to think about it. Yeah.
I, I think one of the things I noticed when I had the policy subcommittee, we had a pretty decent turnout. I, I don't remember ever having one before that you know, we met at one person's show, maybe two. And I think the last one we did, we probably had eight or ten people in the room. You know, different opinions, but nice. I, I thought it was, you know, again, nice little town, you know.
Dialogue came back.
Yeah, I thought it was very good.
Right, and the working groups, just for anybody that hasn't participated in them, it is truly a work, the subcommittees are a working group of the school committee. So let's say it's Sue and Susie. They're there to dive into something particular and kind of break it apart and put it back together. It doesn't, it's not set up like this, like with a formal agenda, but they're happy, I'm happy, and they're happy to, you know, make it conversational, you know, because it is important for, for the public to come and it, not just witness, but be a part of it and ask their questions and, you know, get the respect of an answer in a setting where it makes sense, so.
Well, you know, it's one thing too, and I think we have to clarify, someone said, well, why aren't there more people on the subcommittee from the committee? And that would violate the open meeting law if we had more than two, right?
Right, so you can, you can't have, you cannot have a quorum. So three of you with, as a body of five makes a quorum. So the subcommittees can only be two.
Right.
There have been times in the past where a third member of the committee is interested in the work and comes as a member of the public, but they can't participate in the discussion.
Right. I think there's some people ask me that question, you know, why would only two of you be there? And I'm like, okay.
So the last thing is future meeting dates and topics. So we technically have September twentieth on as our next meeting date. I don't have anything pressing to give to you that day. As you can see, the next two things coming up are really an October timeline. I don't know, I, I know Mike had mentioned not, not being able to participate. I know Susie has something potentially going on. I don't know if you guys want to just do the one meeting in September. We have in the past only met once in September. I did go back through the calendar except for in twenty twenty where we met every day in September. Every day and every night, all day. You know, I think if, if we go till October, we can have a conversation about school improvement plans, achievement reports. It gives, it gives the staff a little bit of time.
The first week in October.
Yeah, so if we go to our regular schedule in October, which, what is it, the fourth and the?
Fourth, yeah.
The fourth and the eighteenth.
So are, are we taking out the twentieth and moving it fourth and eighteenth?
Yeah, so we would just be deleting the second meeting in September and having our regular two meetings in October on the first and the third.
Okay. Committee, committee, good with that?
Yeah.
Does anybody know when the fall town meeting is on the top of their head?
Uh, that's a good question.
Oh, I don't know.
I think it's probably right on the time.
Let me take a peek. I might have had it in here.
See who can find it first.
Oh, yeah.
This will be fun.
Wouldn't it be before election day?
Not on, it's not on the town calendar, public meetings, so. I think it's usually the second Tuesday, but I don't know.
Erin, can I put you on the spot and just give the people in the audience a little bit of an update? It sounds like everything can I say, no runs, no hits nowhere, buses are fine, kids are fine.
Yeah, so school opened last week, believe it or not. It was amazing. Buses were coming. I think, you know, unfortunately, there was two kids we missed on the first day of school, but that happened. Their parents were waiting with them at the bus stop and they drove them to school. They had not selected transportation as part of their registration packet, but now we have them. You know, over the, the course of the first few weeks of school, the transportation times do fluctuate quite a bit, depending on, you know, the populations of students taking the bus. As sports start at the high school, fewer people take it home, so the ride home's shorter and whatnot. So just, just be patient. But no, at the building levels, we do track the arrival and departure time of each bus for the first solid thirty days of school, just to see if we need to make any adjustments to the routes. Route adjustments are difficult, but they do happen. And anytime we're going to make a change to it, we obviously loop in the family a few days ahead of time so that they're aware of the change. But the goal is to get students out the door as quickly as we can. It's, the start is better at North than it has been in the past, but there's still a couple of buses that are three to four minutes later than we'd like to see them. So we need to see that kind of stabilize a little bit. Yeah, so again, a lot of our buses are three-tier buses. So they do a middle, high school run. They do either Habermock or Bryant-Phil, and then they pick up at North. So it's usually those buses that are a little bit late getting here potentially. And as we've said in the past, and I'll reiterate again, there's a national driver shortage. So if you or anyone you know would like to be a bus driver, first student is always hiring. For tomorrow, for example, there's already four, four routes that have a substitute driver. Whenever there's a substitute driver, it takes longer because they don't know the kids of the route. So all of that is happening. Kids are eating lunch. We've been to all the buildings. Kids are happy. It was a little hot last week, but other than that, things are good. While I'm still looking for when the town meeting is, I wanted to give you an update on the survey, or the interest survey that we had sent out. So we have had just, just about twenty respondents. So it was posted through our broadcast emails, so both the community broadcasts and those that are subscribed to the school broadcasts, as well as all of our social media, every one of the individual school Facebook pages, Twitter, all of that. And we've had just twenty responses. So we did push it out again today just to see if we could get anyone else. But if you know anyone that's interested, again, the goal is to have all voices, all opinions be a part of the work. I can say right now, looking at the list, a lot of folks are interested because they have previous experience in DEI work, mostly at the corporate level. But, you know, it's, it's helpful to get different perspectives. So if folks are out there and interested, we did say that we would let everyone know by September nineteenth, the makeup of the committee, so.
Someone asked me the question, do they have to have a student in the school?
No, so community member was one of the choices.
Okay.
I think that's the largest, I think we have six, six community at large. Folks, granted, two of them are employees here, so they could also be an employee on the committee. But we'll work with that one. I don't know when town meeting is. I will find out when town meeting is and let you know. It's like nowhere to be found.
That's odd. Silly. Anybody know when town meeting is?
The high school. We schedule like six o'clock and, you know, we break for seven.
Yeah, I don't see it anywhere.
A hundred and fifty times.
All right, well. It's going to be a surprise.
We're on for the fourth and 18th unless otherwise needed to be adjusted.
Correct. And, um, I'll try to get some, maybe one, maybe policy sub together before then because there is more for that than the others right now, so.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
With that, uh, do we have a motion to return?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ice have it. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.